Welcome everyone to our Weaver County Commission meeting. Today is July 1st, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I'm joined by Commissioner Gage Forrester and Commissioner Jim Harvey. I will invite the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, we will have an invocation or moment of silence offered by Commissioner Harvey. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, I'm a, I love to pray, but I think today, I think it would be appropriate to, last week, we lost a great member of our sheriff's team, Brandon Miles. He was a phenomenal guy, cowboy by nature, and served our country and gave his all. And he passed away. And so if you just, he was laid to rest yesterday. And I think it would be appropriate if we just took a moment of silence since that was, and remembered him. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Item D on our agenda, Commissioner comments. Anything you'd like to share? Commissioner Forrester.
None for me, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to item E, Agenda Reblated Public Comments. This is an opportunity for those in attendance to share comments on any item that is listed on the agenda. We ask that if you come forward, you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item F, Consent Items. Number one, Request for Approval of Purchase Orders in the Amount of $115,031.20. Number two, Requests for Approval of Warrants 105387 through 105448 and 491601 through 491735 in the Amount of $4,699,257.31. Number three, Summary of Warrants and Purchase Orders. Mr. Ricky Hatch, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For purchase orders, we issued a whopping three purchase orders this week, which is great. $115,000 total, just over half of that amount, or $61,000 is for emergency management to purchase an industrial generator. Thirty-eight percent or $43,000 is for our recreation department to replace the recreation hall roof, and nine percent or $11,000 is for the ice sheet to purchase and install a CNG station. As far as warrants, we issued 197 checks this week for $4.7 million. Twenty-five percent of that amount, or $1.2 million, was road construction on 12th Street, and that's paid for with transportation tax dollars. Twenty percent or $945,000 is for the transfer station. That's mostly disposal fees, but also purchase of used heavy equipment. Nineteen percent or $893,000 were ARPA distributions for Bonavista Water Projects, and 10 percent or $471,000 is construction on the Children's Justice Center, as well as some charged to Utah, Utaba Dam design. The top five vendors this week were Staker &amp; Parsons Company for $1.2 million, Bonavista Water for $893,000, Republic Services $774,000, Wadman Corporation for $364,000, and Alta Excavation for $283,000.
Any questions for Mr. Hatch?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Move on to number four, Requests for Approval of New Business Licenses. Number five, Requests for Approval of a New Beer License. Number six, Requests for Approval of Change Order 07R1 on a Contract Buy-in Between Weaver County and the Wadman Corporation for the Construction of the Weaver-Moorean Children's Justice Center. Number seven, Requests for Approval of an Inter-local Cooperation Agreement Buy-in Between Weaver County Library and Davis County Library for Cooperative Borrowing. Number eight, Requests for Approval of an Inter-local Cooperation Agreement Buy-in Between Weaver County Library and the Logan City Library for Cooperative Borrowing. Number nine, Requests for Approval of an amended subsipient agreement Buy-in Between Weaver County and Little Mountain Service Area to Establish amended Terms to the ARPA Funding Agreement Reflecting a Revised Scope of Work and Budget for the Lagoon Rehabilitation and Sewer Infiltration Mitigation Projects. Number 10, Requests for Approval of a Change Order on the Contract Buy-in Between Weaver County and Staker Parsons on the 12th Street Phase Four Project. Number 11, Requests for Approval of Ratification of an Amendment to a Contract Buy-in Between Weber County and the State of Utah Attorney General's Office to Add Additional One-Time Funding from the State to Offset Final Expenses for the New CJC Building. And Commissioners, I would add number 12, which is listed as Action Item One but is a consent item, that is a Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-in Between Weaver County and Runback Election Services for the Printing and Posting of Election Materials. So 12 items in total.
I'm happy to make a-
Ready for motion?
I'm happy to make a motion. Consent Items F1 through and including 12, we just addressed. I would like to make a comment regarding Consent Item Six, if I might.
Please.
So I did meet with our team last week, this Change Order 07R1. I was told we'll be the last change order. I've actually met with Mr. Park as well. He's putting together a spreadsheet, so we know exactly what the total accounting input will be to that, our total cost. We're expecting to receive funds from the existing building, somewhere in the neighborhood of $900,000. I'm not sure that that's actually transpired yet, but we're told that that will take place. So anyway, I think it's proper that we have a final accounting for the CJC, but it looks like all the construction's done, change orders are done. Eleven talked about the final payment from the state, so it'd be good to have a final spreadsheet on that.
Yeah, I agree. That's important, especially because funding came from so many different sources.
It did. A lot of the cities contributed. Obviously, we used a good share of our ARPA funding. We used some capital project monies, but I think, at the end of the day, I think we'd all agree that was a worthwhile project, after seeing the completion.
Great. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Action Items G2, Request for Approval of Ordinance 2025-17 and Development Agreement to Rezone Lowman View Development, formerly Terracotta River, approximately 134 acres of land located at approximately 500 north, 3600 west, from the A2 Zone to the R115 Zone. Mr. Charlie Ewer.
Commissioners, thank you. You guys saw this in a hearing two weeks ago. There were a couple of questions for follow-up, and hopefully we took care of that follow-up satisfactorily. And I've got a presentation if you want to hear it, or I could be quiet and let you guys make a decision.
Commissioners, what's your preference? Would you like to review it?
My questions had to do with the amount of feet for the park district and along the river, and then there was that little horseshoe. Tell me how that's been resolved, if I can, Madam Chair.
So the total amount of footage?
However, you remember, then we met privately-
Yeah.
And we talked about that. Tell me how this is, this presentation today reflects those concerns that I had.
Oh, can do. So the, the amount of footage of trailway is roughly a mile, so you've got about 5280 there. As far as how much distance there is between the applicant's property and the horseshoe or the property on the other side of the horseshoe, there is probably a good 15, 20 feet until you hit that horseshoe, that the applicant will control and own. Applicant will install a trail on their side of that ownership line. The applicant will be giving a 30-foot wide right-of-way easement to the owner of the property within that horseshoe. That's not enough to create a street, but it's enough to get farm access to that property within that horseshoe area.
If I may continue.
Please.
So we talked about 300 feet, and then as the horseshoe, not the main channel, comes around, it's 100 feet. Is that still correct?
Yeah, we did talk about that. I'm not sure that they are doing the full 100 feet. Actually, let me, let me back up just a little bit. When I did my analysis of that open space area, it looked like it was 100 feet from the center of that horseshoe, so it may not be a full 100 feet from the high water to where the 3600 street is, but you're probably looking at close to 75 feet or so.
So that, to have that buffer on the one side of that horseshoe, is it on the other side of that horseshoe?
Not yet. So that'll be when the owner of the property in the horseshoe, when they come in for a request, then we'll apply the setback standards, both the 100-foot for the horseshoe, as well as the 300 from the riverway as well.
On that property?
Uh-huh, on the other person's property.
So you feel that, that this particular agreement, we can make sure that it's, it's similar through all that area out there?
Yep, yep, that entire corridor, that's the intention.
Okay. That concludes my questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions, if I might. So I know I've asked this a number of times, but the park district is in agreement with this, and their needs have been satisfied with the property being conveyed to them, and-
They are, yes.
Everything appears to be recorded and in place on that, Charlie?
Yeah, I don't know if anything has been recorded yet, but the development agreement that you guys are going to be making a decision on today will memorialize those agreements. The park district was comfortable with the land donation that the applicant has offered. The applicant has gone further after negotiation with staff to offer additional on top of that. They're going to be building the trail as well as offering the land, and they'll be building a, a bird observation platform out there as well.
That's right.
And then on top of that, they're going to build two trailheads, both of them having restrooms, water facilities, et cetera.
Good. And so you say it may not be recorded yet, but it is in the development agreement?
Yes. Yep, all of those standards, all of those requirements are in the development agreement.
Okay, so how do you follow up on that if a year from now, six months from now, it's not recorded, and the park district comes to us because we don't have it on record?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. So if the development agreement doesn't get recorded within six to, six months to a year or even longer than that, there is no mandatory requirement for the applicant to record that, but they don't develop if they don't record it. So they don't get the rezone. So the rezone isn't in effect until after the development agreement is recorded, the rezone ordinance is recorded on the property, and, well, yeah, those two. And then they can move forward with developing the property. They won't get to develop without that.
Okay, so the plat has not been recorded yet then?
No, no plat yet.
Yeah.
Plat will become, plat hasn't even been proposed yet.
Okay.
We'll be seeing that in the next year, so.
Great, okay. That answered my question.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
One last question, Charlie. In this development agreement, there are two stubs of roads that will go to the river, and then eventually they're designed so that one day of the other side of that, or when, if and when the other side of that river develops, then Marriott-Slaterville, who's, of who that property belongs to on the other side of the river, those developers will bring that road to the river as well. Whose responsibility will it be to provide the bridge in one or both of those locations, if or when that development on the other side of the river is done?
Funding of those bridges will probably come from a variety of sources. I would guess from the county side, if we were to put money into it, it would be from impact fees, kind of like 4100 north in the valley. We've got money from WACOG, we're putting money from impact fees, so a variety of different sources, plus developer funds that are going into that. I would see the same or something similar on these bridges, where they would likely substantially benefit Marriott-Slaterville as well. There, we would probably look to them to provide some of that funding. Again, this is all assuming Marriott-Slaterville wants those bridges, wants those links. Right now, they've been pretty clear with us that they don't.
Right.
Yep.
So would that come, would those monies also, would you say could come out of the Municipal Services Fund?
If you guys choose to fund it that way. There would be no obligation for the county to fund it that way.
But then the, how those get funded would be on the county?
Potentially. Yeah, potentially. And that's why we have impact fees, that's why we put these kinds of things on our impact fee facilities plan, so that we can be earmarking those funds for projects as development occurs. So you'll see 400 or so residences in this project, each of them putting an impact fee amount away. I can't remember what our road impact fee is, probably close to 1,500, between 1,000 and 1,500 or so. So if you did that math, you'd see how much money you put together to potentially build those bridges. Now, that's not to say that the impact fees for this project will only go towards bridges. Impact fees have to be spent within six years of their collection. My guess is these bridges are well over six years out, but my guess is we are also going to see significant more development in that area. These bridges really aren't going to be needed unless we have significant more development in that area, both on the county side as well as on Marriott-Slaterville's side. So we'll be able to build a nest egg by then. Or not build them at all.
Yeah, that's not enough money to build half a bridge.
No, not, not from the one development.
No.
Yep. Agreed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. There are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve ordinance and development agreement to rezone Lowman View Development, formerly Terracotta River, approximately 134 acres of land located approximately 500 north, 3600 west, from A2 to R115, as presented by Mr. Charlie Ewer this morning. I don't have the ordinance number, but-
2025-17.
There you go. There it is, right there. 2025-17.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-17. Commissioner Forrester.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bollos.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Charlie. Item H, Public Hearing. Number one, A Request for a Motion to Adjourn the Public Meeting and Convene a Public Hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now in a public hearing for an ordinance and development agreement to rezone approximately 32.112 acres, approximately, from A1 to R115. The proposal is located at approximately 601 south, 3600 west. The project is called the Herrick Estates Development, ZMA 2025-01. Mr. Felix Yelverino, thank you. Welcome.
Yes, good morning. We, I have a few slides I'd like to share. Perhaps maybe the bill could bring those up on the, oh, here they are. Okay, good. Let me see if I can get them full screen. Well, I think I'll just work through them as is. So here we have a request for a rezone, and this is, comes to you after the Planning Commission's recommendation for-
Charlie to the rescue.
Yeah, let's see if we can get this full screen. And so the Planning Commission sends this to you after a positive recommendation. We held a, a public hearing with the county, with the Planning Commission, and they, they looked over some, some of the details related to street and pathway connectivity for this development. As you can see, the, the way the development is laid out, it spans across quite a bit of area from an east-west direction, and it connects, it would, in effect, it would connect 3600 west and 4100 west. And you can see the proximity to the elementary school there on the, on the southwest of this, of this development proposal. There's also a Hooper Irrigation Canal that runs through this property. And, and so what, what we'll, what I'd like to touch on through this slide presentation is some of the design elements that come into play. You can see the total acreage of this request would be, you know, changing the zoning from A1 to the R115. The R115 is primarily for residential development. And so as it is now, primarily agriculture, changing over to residential. And the, the 15 actually represents the density, 15,000 square foot generally per lot. If you take the entire, the gross area of this land, and then you, that's how you would, you would obtain your density, which turns out to be about 93 lots. You can see here, we, we have that 32.112 acres. That's, that's the entire boundary of this rezone request. And we've, we're all, we're also going to touch on some of the improvements that are going to be made, 23600 west street and 4100 west street, and how this proposal conforms to the general plan, the Western Weaver general plan. And also, we'll touch on a few things regarding the smart growth principles, and we'll go on from there. And so here's something that the, the developer provided, something that is required for all rezone requests, where we want to see how this development aligns with the general plan of future street routes and pathway routes. And this, this is really helpful to see that not only does this plan line up with the general plan, street routes and pathway routes, but it also is able to accomplish those connectivity requirements through road stubs out for adjacent development, and, and also connections to existing public right-of-ways. And this, this map, or maybe I'll describe, so you've got street types, and this is something that is required to be in the development agreement. And what this actually helps us to see is that the street type A would be a 60-foot right-of-way. Street type B would be 66-foot right-of-way, intended for more your neighborhood collector. And, and you can see street type A with the yellow line going through it. Planning, the Planning Division proposed that, or recommended that there's a 10-foot pathway on that street, on that street alignment, street type B. And, and also on 4100 west street, that's a 66-foot right-of-way, and there would be a 10-foot pathway on the east side of that road. And on the other side, over on 3600 west, you can see street type F, and that's actually proposed to be a 100-foot right-of-way. And so there would be, need to be some right-of-way dedication along the, the subdivision boundary, as well as some right-of-way improvements along street F. And those right-of-way improvements, that, that black line on the, on the east, on, on the 3600 west, that, those improvements would connect up with what Riverbend Cluster Subdivision has done there on 725 south. So some of those details are actually very clearly spelled out in the development agreement, but I thought this map would be helpful to kind of see where the direction we're going with that. And here's the concept plan that is included with the development agreement. It kind of shows the developer's intention as far as lot layout and, you know, the number of lots, the, the parcels of land being affected. In this case, you've got some ownership, several different owners. You've got Mr. Musgrave, and you've got the Herricks and the Bittens. And Mr. Musgrave, his, his actually, the request to be added into this rezone came after the, the, the public hearing with the Planning Commission. And after looking at where Musgrave's property is situated, it really makes sense to include this property with the Bitten-Herrick rezone. If you look there on the, on the west side of this, fronting directly on 4100 west street, you've got some, some of the Musgrave property there that, that is included, and it amounts to about 2.4 acres that, that is added to the original request. And let's see here. And there's also, this, this map, what I'll also touch on is, is that pathway alignment. That was, that was something that was discussed in great detail with the Planning Commission. They, they were, there was a little bit back and forth, and they wanted to make sure that the pathway alignment shown on the concept plan aligns as closely as possible with what's on the general plan. And by including the Musgrave land, we, we feel like this, this, we're able to accomplish that alignment that we're looking for along the Hooper Irrigation Canal there. And so we think that, that's a pretty good result of that negotiation and inclusion of Mr. Musgrave's property. And here, here's a, a slide showing the current Western Weaver general plan. This is the future land use map. And this is really helpful to show some of the, the greenways, pathway alignments, and also roadways. And you can see, it's a pretty fine red line, that's the, the Bitten-Herrick area. And the, the yellow, the yellow base color indicates that this area is, is suitable for the medium to large lot residential development. And this, this, the, the density of 15,000 square foot is, is actually attainable in this area due to the, the local facilities in place, particularly the access to central Weaver sewer connection. And here we have the, the future transportation map. Again, this is a little, a little more greater detail showing specifically the transportation elements. Okay. See, I'll just go right on to the, the recommendation that came from the Planning Commission. And they, if, if we focus in a little bit on number two, you can see that's something that the Planning Commission was, was intending, that the, the trail aligned with the Hooper Irrigation Canal. And, and staff feels like that, that the, the concept plan does accomplish that quite well, and also making necessary improvements to 4100 west street, which would include a pathway extending all the way down to 900 south. And then also that, that Collector Street that runs in an east-west direction that we mentioned does have a pathway on the south side, and that would be a 10-foot pathway. And this, this is a legislative item that the, the County Commission does have quite a bit of discretion on. And any, any recommendations, any further recommendations that you think should be included with the development agreement, I'd be happy to do so. Any, any questions for me?
Questions?
So, yeah, give up a question if I might. Just clarification, so it looks like 3600 west, as far as road improvements have been addressed?
Yes.
So what's the distance of their requirement for improvements on 3600 west?
So the exact distance, I'm, I haven't quite measured it yet, but what, in effect, what it would do, it was, it would be asphalt improvements for that length from basically the north edge of, of this development, where this development fronts on 3600, from that north edge straight down to that 725 south street. So let me go to the connectivity map here.
So the yellow, yellow line, what is that? Is that road improvements or is that-
That's the trail.
So yellow is the trail.
Okay.
Yes.
So the road improvements won't go to 900 south?
No, not on 3600.
On 3600?
Yeah, so on 3600, that black, that thick black line on this map indicates the extent of those, those roadway improvements.
All right. So what's the plan then? You know, that's, what'd you say, 93 residents?
93, yes.
You know, again, I go back to the amount of traffic dumping out on, on the road. It would seem that taking that to 900 south makes good sense. There's a, is there a plan for that, to take that to 900 or?
Well, not at this time. I think then, once you get further development along 3600 south of this proposal, I think there, there is potential to have developers take that responsibility on.
Have there been improvements on the east side with those, with the Riverbend Cluster Subdivision?
Yes, yeah, there has been. There's some, some curb, gutter, sidewalk.
So we're talking about the, the west side?
West side.
Yes, that's right.
So 3600 west has been improved?
3600 west, I mean, there, there are segments that are improved. There, obviously, they, they, it needs some, some work, but from, from as far as what we can obtain from the developer at the time when they're, they have their proposal in, I think we were able to accomplish that with Riverbend and also with, with this Bitten-Herrick.
All right, that's, you know, it's always just my question as far as traffic out there, the number of homes that are going to be dumping onto a fairly busy road right now. We need to make it as convenient as, and safety obviously comes up in mind first. That's my question, Madam Chair.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, if there are no others, then we'll move to public comments if there's any. Don't go too far.
Okay.
In case you need to help us respond-
That sounds good.
-here in the next bit. Anyone in the public who'd like to come forward and speak to this, you're welcome to do so now. Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now back, back in a public meeting. Item five is an action on public hearing. H2, Request for Approval of Ordinance 2025-18 and Development Agreement to Rezone Approximately 32.112 acres from A1 to R115. The proposal is located at approximately 601 south, 3600 west. The project is called the Herrick Estates Development, ZMA 2025-1. Project is called the Herrick Estates Development, ZMA twenty twenty-five dash one.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, my, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen as previously read. My only question is they just throw in that little bit of maraschino cherry on top with that mesquerie property. I don't know. I'll be okay.
I have a motion.
I'm not exactly sure what goes on top, but, you know. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, Commissioner four?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item I, Commissioners-
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.